So we put together a presentation trying to figure out the way we could think of so that we're not sitting in the situation we are right now with that bridge on County Road 2, Bridge 25501. So just a little background of what we have for bridges. We have county state aid bridges and we have the rest on our county road system. You can see the majority of them are on our county state aid system. Townships add in another 200. So between townships have almost as much as the county does. And then we've got city bridges. And we also threw in, so the city bridges that we're talking about here are the ones for City of Red Wing and Lake City. The smaller cities, we inspect their bridges, but the City of Lake City and Red Wing pay us to inspect their bridges so they don't have to have inspectors that keep up on it for a small number of bridges. So Cannon Valley Trail and 19 bridges there, they're crossed over by the public, so we inspect their bridges also. So we've got a total on our system of 443 bridges. And just to let you know, last time I heard, St. Louis County has the most bridges, Freeborn County has the second, and we're number three in the state of Minnesota for the total number of bridges that are on our highway system. And depending on design, box culverts, brand new box culverts get inspected every four years, brand new bridges get inspected every two years, bridges that are not in too good a condition are inspected every single year. So this last year, we inspected 193 bridges. That number changes on a yearly basis depending on how many of them are in the two-year and how many are in the four-year cycles. So qualifications, just to let you know who these people are out there who are inspecting these bridges. First, you need to go to a class, 14 hours of introduction to it, and then a 10-day course on inspecting in-service bridges. In-service bridge refresher courses are done annually. In fact, most of us will be sitting in on those coming here in the next month. Years to do it after somebody gets through all the classes, then they've got to spend five years with a certified inspectors and then pass proficiency exam before they can actually go out on their own to inspect these bridges. Every year, they get more complicated too on the stuff that they throw out to us. So what led up to this particular bridge? It started, due to a lack of staff that we've had this year, we asked MINDOT if they would come in and take a look at our bridges for the year. Other counties have done this too, and that's one reason I wanted to do it was to get a different set of eyes looking at our bridges. It's kind of like as I stand there and look at myself in the mirror every day and going, when did I get gray hair? When things come on slowly at a time, even look bridges, you look at them every single year, it doesn't look a lot different than it was the year before. After a while, they slowly, slowly deteriorate. This brought a whole fresh set of eyes on bridges that these inspectors have never seen before. MINDOT staff, this is their full-time bridge inspectors, they're not inspecting battlement us, they're not, in the summertime, they're not putting plans together for the next feeding project in the winter, these guys inspect bridges. They fine-tune their expertise with the experience they have, and they have all the advanced equipment to check just about anything and everything you want to check on a bridge. So they're in the process to see how much metal there was on those piling. And what they like to do is you break down to take all the rust off of it, see what's actually left for the metal, and then you can figure out what your section is, figure out which section it's supposed to be, so you can see what chapter section lost to determine how much pile of that, the strength of that pile has been deteriorated. And they got to the point that they just basically punched a hole through the pile, telling them that there was absolutely no solid metal underneath the rust. This amounted to what's called a critical finding in the processes that we have to do, the thorough processes. When you hit certain, certain levels of deterioration, you have a critical finding, bridges need to be closed when there's a critical finding, you need to have a structural engineer come out to evaluate it to see if it can carry traffic at all, and if so, at what level. So resulted us in closing the bridge down to one lane of traffic as the situation works it. The other thing we can do is increase inspections with our own force. We can create our own expert inspectors, more like the MINDOT model. Bringing in people, have them, have them spend more time inspecting the bridges. This will require additional staff to keep, we want to do the rest of the work we're doing and do more bridge inspections. It also involves a lot more gear, dive gear, a sniper, I doubt we're going to go buy a sniper truck, those things are probably $500,000, $600,000. Front-trading radar, a lot of their inspectors are structural engineers, so it takes additional equipment to do it. The other thing we could do is we could inspect them sooner than we're required to by the cycles. We could, you could go out and take a look at all the two-year cycle bridges and look on them on an annual basis. For many of the structures, like you said, a brand-new bridge is on a two-year cycle. There isn't any, we're not going to really gain any benefit out of inspecting brand-new bridges on a yearly basis. So I don't know if that's really recommended to do that. We could hire MINDOTS or consultants to inspect our bridges on a regular basis. Some counties don't have their staff inspect any of them, they have MINDOT come and do all of them, and they just send them off, send them off. Get billed for it and send them payment to MINDOT. We wanted to do that, have them come in, we could ask them to come every year, as some counties do, maybe once every two years, once every four years, thinking if we want to have them come in, one every 10 years would probably be a good idea, have them come in, do the same thing, just take a look at these bridges that we've been seeing on a regular basis and put a new set of eyeballs on them. We could increase bridge replacements, but this gets to be a little tricky too. This local planning index is a score that the state came up with recently, which evaluates the condition of the bridges based on the inspections we do. A bridge that has this LPI under 60 are eligible for state and federal dollars. And right now, on our entire system, out of the 443, all the bridges that have an LPI under 60 are already in the five-year program, except for one in the City of Goodhue, that's on a minimal maintenance road just south of town, if they leave it open for maybe snowmobiles or something, but that's the only bridge we have that would be eligible for funding, that we do not have in our five-year program today.
Does that go down to their wastewater treatment plant?
I think it's past.
Past that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Broadway is the street, it's kind of goes out in the middle of nowhere.
And how many bridges have 60 and under for their LPI?
However many we have in our program, I can't tell you.
Like a ballpark, can you even give me?
No. So we have probably 35 or so.
Okay.
Pick a number.
Yep, in that ballpark.
Yep. So the other thing we could do would be to just increase the rate that we're replacing them, instead of having all of them within five years, we could say, well, we want to get rid of all of them that are eligible within three years or four years. That's going to really bump up the bridge replacement program and the engineering required to get ready for that. And so we'd have quite an increase in cost here for either three years or four years. And potentially, once we get done with that point, the number of bridges we have put together a program could, could weigh in quite a bit. Every year, it's like with everything else, every year, a couple of bridges, most like with anything else, everything sitting out there for another year gets a little bit older and gets a little bit worse, so we slowly have bridges that are sitting at a 60, 65, and a matter of a year or two, we'll be down to a 60 or under 60. So if we take care of everything over, over, say, a three-year period of time, then the next five-year program, instead of having three or four, or five bridges per year, we may only have two or three, which isn't the end of the world, but it helps us staffing-wise and budgeting-wise, the more consistent we can keep our programs, the easier it is instead of having large fluctuations. If we have large fluctuations, then that's additional staff or consultants.
Greg, when we go out and inspect the bridges, then do we have a crew, do we have, do we have a plan that we actually, do we do repairs on the bridges as we see minor things happen?
We, we, no, we really do not do a lot of repairs on our bridges. There, there are a lot of the things, a lot of the types of repairs that are needed, we couldn't do with our own crew. And then you could put together a contract and hire a contractor to come and do it. We just never really spent a lot of time on it. I mean, we've got enough staff that we can keep moving on replacing them, but repairing them, no, we really have not done a whole lot to repair them.
Right. Well, I mean, I was just thinking from the standpoint of owning a car and a house, that if you start, if you take care of leaks and damage as it, as it happens, then they'll last longer.
Well, I think, I think we do, as far as the guardrails or the safety protection on the bridge, we, we will repair that.
Yeah.
Do that, but actually, you know, going underneath the bridge and trying to, what, what, you know, without taking the deck off, how do you, what do you repair under there? I mean, I think it's the construction, the design of a bridge allows you to do only certain things.
Like when the component of a bridge that, that is really critical to its load-carrying ability, say, the metal beams on the bottom of the bridge. If, if those metal beams are getting to the point that they need to be replaced, you can't just go down and take out a metal bridge, you've got to take the whole deck off of it, and then you have to take the abutments halfway apart in order to replace those metal beams, and then you have to replace the entire deck. By the time you're going to go through that whole process, you're probably getting close to the cost of replacing the bridge, because they're integral parts of it. It's not, it's not like on your car, they can go in and they can take your brakes out, and it's just take, take your brakes out, put your brakes back in. With a lot of this, the integral parts of the way these bridges are built, you have to take it apart in order to, and the cost to do that, pretty much cost prohibitive.
Okay.
Brad is, Brad is correct, as far as like if guardrail on the top of a, of a bridge leading up to the abutment or to the rails is hit, we can come back in and replace those. And if some of them are looking bad, we'll put that into our guardrail replacement program to, to replace that kind of stuff. And the surfacing on it will, we do have the guys patch the holes on the top of the decks when they start to get bad. So some of those kind of minor repairs we can do. Generally speaking, when these bridges are getting to the point where that LPI is getting to be at 60 or less, it's not just one component of the bridge that's really, really bad. It's, it's, everything is just starting to age to the point.
Maybe maintenance would be a better word than repair.
Right. But there are some things you can maintain, you can maintain the surface of the bridge, but, yeah. Okay, so we could set a replace, a goal to replace all the bridges that have an LPI under 70, if you want to try to get ahead of them before they even get that bad, but we would have, that would involve throwing in seven additional county bridges and 11 township bridges. And townships would have to see if they're even interested in doing this or not. But we've got to remember, one thing is that these bridges, adding these additional bridges, they all have an LPI over 60, that means we're going to pay 100% of the cost of that project. No state grants, no federal grants to help us with it. And I got a slide later where we actually talked about the funding on one of our bridges, on how much we pay for it versus on this particular bridge, what the feds and the locals pay for it. So to me, it's, it's not recommended if, if these things have an LPI above a 60, I think the state has a pretty good system. If it's above 60, it's not that bad. It's when the, the ones that are getting below 60, that's when it's, it's worth investing money to repair them.
What's, what is the county two bridge, what's that LPI on that one?
That was like in the 30s, I think it's 38 or 35, if I remember right. So this, we could replace all the bridges that are like that, as, I mean, if we don't like that, you know, particular design of it. We have one in the program for next year and one for the year after that. I only know of one other one off the top of my head, and it's the same design, but I wouldn't replace it, because there's nothing wrong with it. In this case, in this situation, it's in better shape than the rest of them. I don't know if it was put in much later than the rest of them, or it's in a different scenario, but it's got an LPI well above 60, and I would see no reason to replace it just because of some of that same design.
This, you've brought up, I mean, this, like you said, that this design is not a single, this, I mean, this design, this bridge, similar bridge design is down another half a mile on the other in township road. But you spoke of this bridge, that you said, this bridge has been a question mark for multiple years. You said you saw something wrong with the surface, bleaching in, you've done, had a problem. So this bridge, you could easily say is an anomaly in our.
No, I would not say it's an anomaly. It's, it's been, it's been in the, we've been, it's been in the program for, what, three or four years, in the fifth year of coming up. We had, it was in the schedule to replace it next year.
Right.
So it's, it's.
So what you're saying is the other bridge down the road, farther same design, the pilings, the rust, everything looks similar.
It's not, it's, it's not the piling, that's not on this particular designed bridges, it's actually the beams that are the issue.
Okay.
This one is an anomaly compared to all the rest of its design because of the fact that.
So maybe it's not fair to say, I guess I'm looking at it saying, it seems to be presented that this is, is an anomaly, this, we've known this bridge because of the surface you presented to us, that this bridge has deteriorated faster than what, is that fair to say, it's deteriorated faster than what you expected?
It's, it's, we've known it, it had rusty piles on it for a long time.
All right.
So we've had it in the program. I can't, we don't have any way to, to measure.
I guess, so the point I'm getting at is that we've had a system that has worked for how many years, and we have to look at the system and say, what can we change so that we don't, but from what we've been presented, what I feel I've been presented, this bridge is something abnormal, something happened, multiple things took place in this bridge that caused this to fail, get to this point, maybe a little prematurely. Okay? That's what we've been presented with, we said, that's why it's closed, it obviously wasn't going to make it to 2024. So I don't think we need to rewrite the entire process of what we're doing from inspection bridges, how we're going about them. It happened, this bridge failed, you know, the objective is, my outlook coming at this, it should have been caught earlier, it should have been on the program even for this year, and it wasn't, that's my concern, that's the issue, is that we're sitting in this position because of that. So a question to you and your department is, when I go under and look at that bridge, and anybody else, if I give pub, public and take snapshots, which I have, of the pilings where they're connected, and somebody says, hey, you've been driving over this bridge for how long, are you concerned about it when you look at this picture? And I get a lot of comments like, are you kidding, that's what this bridge is, it is? So this bridge has been like this for how long, I don't know, should have been on the agenda, maybe moved ahead, that's what I think the focus of the board or the public works is looking, is that something with this bridge took place to cause it to fail prematurely, maybe should have been accelerated on a program to get this one taken care of quicker. We don't need to reinvent the bridge inspection program, we just need to look at this one and say, something happened here. We are aware of it, that's why the conversation's going, that's why the call's is done, let's not let it get to this point, because you can't, if I went and looked at the underneath side of this bridge, you're saying the one down the road a half a mile isn't going to look anywhere similar.
No, it's not.
Right. So you can't tell me the inspector went under there and looked at it and said, this bridge looks like this, and this one looks like that, but they're both scheduled to be replaced in two years. Something's wrong, something's getting missed. So this one should have been accelerated to get replaced quicker, that's what we're looking at.
As we just, as I just mentioned, the reason that we found that some, we knew that those piles were rusted. We didn't have the technology, and we've never gone through to try to figure out what the section loss was. That's when MINDOT came in with their inspectors, and that's what they do on their bridges, and they've got the equipment to do that, and they've got the time to do that. They were going in and checking something that we've never had the ability to check.
I get it, but average Joe going under and looking at that bridge, if you looked at those two bridges side to side, would have said, there's a problem here. And if you're saying that maybe we should have called, if it was a concern, it either should have gotten accelerated or called MINDOT in a lot quicker, so that we're not in this position. Because we don't need to reinvent the bridge, it's a new world, we just need to be, common sense would have said, there is a problem.
But I think.
Let's take this a step ahead and get this accelerated done before it completely falls apart with us, but that's all, as a board member, I'm asking to.
You cannot predict that this one's going to fail in a year or two. I mean, they can, you have bridges out there that have, Todd, that won a County Road 11, that one, we've been watching that bridge too, because we knew that bridge was getting bad, we had it in the program. Did we know that it was going to fail last year? No. And we've got a lot of bridges out there that are not real pretty, and any one of those, you could have something change in them that all of a sudden they become a major issue. A lot of them. And the only way you're going to get rid of that is if you're going to get rid of all of your bridges that are, you know, based on something. And if you want to use it as your LPI, use, use the LPI, because that determines on what you get your money for. So the question is, do we want to try to increase the number of them we're replacing today? Because that's the only way you're going to find out, because we just don't have a crystal ball. I mean, we stopped and looked at that bridge last summer, and I said, this bridge is in bad shape, this bridge needs to be replaced. We don't have a crystal ball that's going to tell us exactly when that happens.
So how do you come to me as a board member? You're engineering, you're looking at it and say, this bridge has to be replaced, but I think it'll make it another year. So you're looking at two years out. To me, I'm saying, really? If I live in that area and I take pictures and I look at that and say, really? We've had, we've had roads, bridges and stuff that need to get changed, our five-year construction program changes, depending on interior, the roads and bridges, should have been accelerated, the bridge should have been replaced this year if not accelerated doing it.
Should the 11, should the County 11 bridge have been replaced?
Not familiar with any workings of County 11, I'm familiar with this bridge, because this is what we're dealing with.
That's the one where we had a special meeting, so the board could, could buy the boxes in advance, so that they could get made, so that we could replace it in the spring. That was a special board meeting for that.
I think about it a little bit like if a physician's following a lung nodule, most of them might not grow, but some of them are going to, and they can't predict ahead of time which one, but they start looking at it more frequently and more intensely. And so one of my questions would be is once it hits 60 or, or, or less than that, if that's the point at which we want MINDOT to come in with their special equipment, so they can give us more information, or if the load capacity decreases by a certain amount, or if you guys say, boy, this is weird, we don't know what's going on, then, I mean, those might be the circumstances in which it would be cost-effective and maybe life-saving to have MINDOT take a look, not on all the bridges, but in all those bridges.
That would be, that would be one way to do it.
Yeah.
To say is.
That's what we're looking at, this bridge was one of those anomalies that said, there's a problem with it, it should have been dealt with sooner.
Right, but, but you can't tell which of the 10 is going to give the trouble, so that's why you want the guy who can look at the lung nodule more closely to follow all 10 of them, not, not just try to guess which one of the 10 is going to be.
And that's why this one showed.
Right, but we, but we maybe should have them look at the, I don't remember how many you said were under 60, 35 bridges, maybe we should have them look at those and others that you have specific reasons you're concerned about.
Well, they're still, they're coming back next year, they're going to, we hired them for a two-year period of time, because there are, there are some bridges, you know, on a two, two-year cycle, whatever, and they could find something on one of those bridges too, you, you never know. So, no, that's, I think it was a good idea that MINDOT come in, I think it's a good idea to have them come back next year, but I like that idea. Pick a number, if it's got an LPI of 60 or maybe even 65, as it's starting to approach,
I think you also talked about how some of them, the number's dropping fast, and if the number's dropping fast, that would be an indicator that maybe it needs to be looked at. And I, I don't know what that would be, but certainly 60 and under, it would seem like needs to be looked at more.
Excuse me, just to keep us on track, we have five minutes.
All right, okay, we got to move, all right. So, so the other thing, if you wanted to hit them when they hit a certain age, somebody asked, you know, what if we get rid of all of them that are, are they under the age of 50, we'd have to start replacing nine bridges a year, which almost doubles what we've been doing in the past. The other option is we could put more money into it, you could put more money into it by either, you know, say, if we wanted to replace everything that was 65 or less than we want to pay for it, we put them into the program, but we're either going to have to take money from highways to do it, or you're going to have to raise other funds somewhere else to pay for them, so.
I think the one thing we really want to make sure is that we aren't in this situation again, so yes, I think we need to come up with something that we aren't going to do in four minutes.
Right.
But yes, none of us want to be here.
Commissioner Betcher said, though, I like, that's, that's a good idea. You could have MINDOT come in, take a look at on an annual basis, everything that's, that is at 60 or 62 or something like that, so.
But I think also, if you guys think there's something strange that you aren't certain about, why not have them look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, even if the number's 70.
Yeah. All right, um, so we want to talk about consultants too.
Well, our 9:45 got postponed, so I'm wondering if the board wants to have the board meeting and then come back with the second presentation at 9:45, or approximately there.
I think that would make a very good idea, because this is, this is important. Can you do that?
Yeah.
One of the questions I have is, you know, obviously, bridge inspection's a pretty specialized piece of this puzzle. We got to do it to township bridges, we got to do it to our bridges. Is there, is there any appetite for two or three or four counties to go together and actually have a bridge crew that does inspections across four counties or three counties? And that's what they're dedicated to, like the state inspectors? And we share that cost across a few counties?
We could talk to the county engineers, but we're going, we're going, we're going to end up fronting the major part of the cost of that though.
And that's fine, because we have the most bridges. I totally understand that, but, but if they're hiring the state inspector, on, you know, two of them, that, that they're not doing any of their inspections, they're all doing it with the state, maybe if you put it all together, maybe having some more equipment and stuff would make, not a snorkel trip, that, you just, they're specialized, you hire, you hire with that, but maybe there's a way to have a more seasoned person doing bridge inspection, because they've had, they just see that many more bridges. I mean, that's, that's critical in, in how you do it. I don't know if there's an appetite for that, but it's just another, another avenue to explore maybe.
The other, the other avenue we should probably, should look at, which is getting some more of the specialized equipment that we don't have. Right, because on this particular bridge, if we would have had a depth gauge that we could use to determine out what the, the section loss is, we could have been knocking on this bridge five years ago to find out how bad it was.
Could we look forward to that, has come up with a couple of options that we might be able to look at, including this one?
Well, there's that, I mean.
We have to have willing participants, that's, that's a flip side of it. I mean, from our end, we could say, that's a good idea, but from their end, they may say, nah, we really don't want to, we don't want to get into that, but.
What, one last question I have, did the state examine the 189 bridges this year? They did all of those?
The majority of them.
Okay, and that was how much money? I think you said maybe $21,000 or something.
It was somewhere around $21,000.
It was relatively inexpensive.
Comparatively.
Yeah.
We had to, yeah. Our, our inspectors needed to go out and inspect a certain number of bridges to keep their certifications.
I see, I see, yeah.
So.
All right.
Just one quick thing, for anybody that's on virtually, the link for this topic, when we resume at 9:45, will be the same link that you used at 8:30, but for anybody going on a county board, they'll have to go to the county board link.
Thank you very much, Greg. All right, we are pausing the committee of the poll until 9:45 or after the county board meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
And Greg and Jess, I turn it over to you.
All right.
Can I make one comment, like just?
Yes.
This, I'm assuming this has all come about because we've been questioning the consulting fees that we've been, have on the budget and stuff, or I'm assuming that's.
Yes, yeah, you guys asked for this.
But I'm assuming, yes.
I get, I think everybody here understands that there's specialized situations where we need consultants, we 100% accept that, understand that, not a problem. So this obviously resulted from the fact we spent $90,000 for a consultant to inspect a bridge, or watch the construction of a bridge, which normally was done in-house. That's where it got us, that's where we looked at and said, if we can normally do it, why didn't it? Well, we didn't have the staff, staffing's not changing easily, we're working at it, trying to get staffing to change. So that's where we're coming from, I'm coming from as commissioners, how can we? How can we not have to spend as much money when it's something we can do in-house, which kind of resulted to changing of, what's the workload that Public Works has? Why are we dealing with recycling? Why are we dealing with trails and stuff? Can we ease the workload that you have that you're dealing with? It's nothing to do with engineering. You're an engineer, Jess is an engineer. Can we focus on engineering? Not all the other administrative, maybe not the road so much, maintenance and stuff like that. That has been, and I think the conversation we had with the board, that's kind of been the focus. How can we get that accomplished, so we don't have to spend as much money? I'm just saying, my all look, and I assume that's the conversation we had with the board, is it, what worked for us five years ago, obviously it's not working because of staffing levels and what were expectations for you guys to accomplish. So need to change out of Public Works, how things are getting done, where are you utilizing your time? We need that to come from you, and this is maybe beyond this committee of the whole. It seems like a lot of this, I mean, the whole here was directed towards why you're spending the money on consultants, which I get a hundred percent. But do we need to spend the money on them, where you guys could do it because of your experience, your knowledge, your engineering background?
We still need, we still need those engineering technicians to be out on those projects on a full-time basis.
Looking forward though, could we possibly look at the option of, are the things that we can take away from your departments that would lighten your load?
No, I don't, if you take parks away, if you take recycling away, it has no impact on the staff. We need to actually be on those construction projects.
Chair, can I say something? Okay. This, this, this committee of the whole is, as a result of the discussion in September, when you guys approved the use of consultants, you guys asked for a committee of the whole on how Public Works uses consultants. The discussion about, you know, what, what does, what needs to be in Public Works? And do you need to be an engineer that happened at the board retreat? That topic is still coming, and we'll have a joint workshop with the Public Works and the HR people on their goals. But that's a different topic than this. This is what you guys asked for on how Public Works uses consultants. It's not about, do you need to be an engineer to, you know, manage trail?
All right. So that's coming. Greg, take it away.
All right. So, one reason we're using more consultants is that our program has increased and our staff hasn't. When I started working here, we had five engineering technicians. And that was a, that was above, wow, that's not including the managers we had. That was just the engineering technicians, the guys that are out doing surveying, the guys that put together plans, and the guys that are actually on the projects when we're building them. As of today, we have three engineering technicians. So reduction of force of forty percent in the last five years. We've been looking for an engineering technician for two and a half years. That tells me if we can't find somebody for what we're trying to pay for them, we're not putting enough salary and benefits into, to attract people to even come look at it.
I have one question. You know, we were talking about how we heard the Ramsey County jail also doesn't have enough people. And my question to you is not being able to hire engineering technicians, is that a problem all over the state, including in the larger states? Excuse me, larger counties? Or is it?
Yeah, there's a lot of the other counties that are looking for engineering technicians too.
Including places like Dakota County, or Olmsted County, or Rice County?
True, to a certain point, I haven't talked.
You don't know the answer.
But, yeah, but I know a lot of counties have a hard time finding engineering technicians.
So the salaries and benefits are probably part of the issue, but part of the issue is that overall, there's not enough engineering technicians to fill the jobs available.
Part of the problem, Dakota County has a program for, a two-year program for engineering technicians. This last fall, they had.
Dakota County Technical College?
They had, they had forty kids signed up for class. They had to cancel the class because they didn't have a teacher. And talking with MINDOT, the district engineer down in Rochester, he's actually working with the VOTAC down in Rochester, because they've got the same situation. They had a program, they don't have enough people to come in and teach them. So he's, what he's trying to work out is, can he get MINDOT staff to actually go in and be adjunct professor and work to teach these classes that these kids need? So to a certain point, there's, there, well, Scott also, you started that program up here at Southeast, ARPA program to reduce their free tuition for them. And how many people have signed up? Nobody?
None for engineering tech. We have, I believe, we have one that's for finance, and I believe one is getting interviewed for IT right now, cybersecurity. But out of, that's out of ten, and it's a full scholarship. They have to apply for all the other grants and whatever else they can get first, but we are the last dollar. And so it's technically free education, and out of ten scholarships, we got two people interested.
And I think to Sue, just to, you know, expound on that a little bit. Kenny Ojai County was looking for three. Pope County, not Pope, Pope County? No, Stevens County. Stevens County's got like four projects and nobody to deliver them. So they're contracting out. They're all in, wherever I, wherever I talk to people, it is the same situation that Goodview County had.
So it's not unique to Goodview County? But if there's contractors out there?
Not at all unique to Goodview County. And it's a, it's a product of a lot of things. There's a lot more dollars being put into infrastructure. You can't immediately have people there to do it. Though, we didn't have the job before, we have the job now across all sectors, whether it's city, whether it's the state, or whether it's a county. It's short everywhere. Or the consultants are having a hard time finding it out too.
Or you can't have the teachers to teach the class. Well, then there's nowhere to go.
Well, that, I mean, that begs the question, should the state be looking at developing their own class?
Which is kind of.
With their own.
MINDOT doing it.
MINDOT doing it. To train people.
Well, I thought the district engineer had a great idea. If he could figure out some way that he's got, these people are experts in their area, to have them come in and teach, you know, one class on Tuesday afternoon, something like that. He could help put it together. Because they've got the expertise. Okay. So continuing on here, just talking about the program at Southeast VOTAC here. Our local optional sales tax have increased annually. They've increased a lot quicker than we anticipated when we first adopted it. Our construction program has increased significantly because we've got extra dollars available. Twenty eighteen was the first year we had local optional sales tax. Our program for that year was five point four million. This year, our program for twenty twenty-three is ten point one. It's almost a eighty-seven percent increase in funding over a six-year period of time. And I found, getting on the internet, I found that for the state of Michigan, their construction cost inflation increased since twenty eighteen has gone up by thirty-five percent. It was the closest number I could find. But even when you throw the thirty-five percent of inflation into it, it's still a thirty-eight percent increase in the projects that we're doing. So we've increased the number of projects we're doing significantly with, you know, less staff than we started a long time ago. Now, the federal, the bypass, bipartisan federal bipartisan infrastructure law bill, as they're calling it, is gonna increase the amount of federal money that's going to the states by about thirty-three percent. We're assuming some of those funds will be put into some kind of a grant for, that counties can compete for. So I see more money coming available for construction. And the state, with this large surplus they had, it wouldn't surprise me if they're gonna put some of that into infrastructure investment at some point. So the funds that are in front of us are even higher than what we've got now. Means we could, if we have more money to build more projects, that'd be great. Just need to figure out how to build them and how to inspect them. Bridge and hydraulics, this is an area, this is a specialty area. You do this all the time, and that's all you, you have to be a very specific technical person to do this. And that's, you have to hone your skills to do that all the time. Very few counties have this expertise in house. I don't know, I don't know if even the bigger counties have their own bridge engineers for it, because it's such a specialty. And I don't, I don't know if Goodie County ever had this expertise in house. Highway design. One of our three technicians, one of them, the most park spends the majority of his time doing design work. And it's mainly on our grading projects, or the grading portion of our bridging projects, or other small designs from maintenance projects, which are getting more complicated all the time, putting together overlays, box culverts. We used to do this when I first started, and we did all of our design in house, because we didn't have as many projects and we had more staff. WSB, we hired them to do the two miles on One Hundredth Avenue, hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to hire this out. It was interesting, though, they said that they had forty different staff, all these different subset of civil engineering that were working on that project. We've hired them to do County Road Two, which is four point seven mile, that contract for the, that design is a little over two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, to have them do that design. If we were going to go back to say, we're not gonna hire consultants to do the design on our roads, it would push back our grading program as a whole back by years, absolute years. Right-of-way tasks, this is another area where we've been hiring consultants lately. So they got a, first thing you have to do is you have to get appraisals for each one of the parcels. You gotta meet with those landowners to explain the project in the right-of-way. And need to make offers to each one of those parcels. We hired WSB to do this workforce this year, and I know the two folks that were out there spent a lot of time up and down the road, talking to people, weekends, evenings, all times of the day. So to do those negotiations and prepare the easements, the documents, we need for recording this new right-of-way. And when they need it, they need to prepare it to go to condemnation, which we haven't had to do much of lately. Purchasing right-of-way. And we hired WSB One Hundredth Avenue, over seventy thousand dollars for fifteen parcels. They gave us a call here to do right-of-way for County Road Two, which has fifty parcels, and price of that would be a little over two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We don't have the capacity or even the expertise in-house anymore. And we would need their services if we're gonna try to deliver this thing in twenty twenty-four. The county used to do all this in, in house. So we lost the expertise on how to do that quite a few years ago, actually. We do, this new design manager position that we're advertising for, we've put right-of-way duties in there. So we may be able to find somebody that has these, these skills. If not, when we hire somebody, we get them up to speed so that they can start pulling up and doing the right-of-way for us. And we do work with our, with the surveys office. They can help us write the right-of-way descriptions. And then when these need to be recorded, they help with the recorder's office to get that stuff all put together for us. Specialty projects, these are areas we hire consultants for on an as-need basis. Transportation plan, for instance, we were talking about starting a transportation plan. You spend hours gathering public input by talking to all sorts of different groups out there. Take a look at what's changing your land use, your traffic trends, the volumes, your highway classifications have to meet federal requirements. Basically trying to figure out, where exactly are we gonna need additional highways or better highways twenty-five years from now? That's what they're really after. The last plan was completed in two thousand and four, and its timeframe goes through two thousand and twenty-five. And go through that plan and take a look at what we've built. We've built, it's actually the predictions that we made back in twenty twenty, or two thousand and four have really come true. We built a lot of the projects that we anticipated back in two thousand and four.
Greg? So are these plans normally done more often than every twenty years?
Should, you should probably try to do them about once every ten years or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just take time to do them. Bank stabilization, our County Road Forty-six, if anybody's driven up that hill on Forty-six, you got a steep embankment to, to the north, and then a steep drop-off to the south that goes down into a creek that's in some places probably thirty feet below the surface of the road. The roadway is slowly roading down into that creek. So we hired a consultant to come out, take a look at, what can we do to prevent that road from basically falling into the creek? And we met with them earlier this year, came up with a design, a concept for stabilizing the slope on this road. And it's something we'll, we'll work out and bring back to the board when we have some idea on how to fix it. But it's one of these, if we don't do something to it, that road is, it's literally sliding down the hill.
Just to kind of piggyback on what you asked about, how often they should be done. Do you think, do you think, you think if Goodview County would have had population growth, like we probably predicted in two thousand and four, two thousand, that it would have made a difference that we would have had to revisit? That we wouldn't be meeting the needs in roads because of population growth?
It could have. It could have.
I mean, we've been fairly pretty stable to, when you think about it, not much growth. Had we had growth, and I, and I look north, Lakeville, you know, Farmington, you know, the things that Dakota County has to deal with as far as growth in county roads, is, is really tied a lot to residential growth and business growth, which hasn't been what we've seen in Goodview County to that degree. And where it has happened, it's happened in Zbroda, right on Highway Fifty-two, where the traffic is going e- either way on there, not so much out from there. So I, I wonder if, going forward, part of that is tied to population growth? How, how often you really need to revisit that? Twenty years is too long. And it'll be twenty years, so that's probably too long. But maybe it's not ten in Goodview County. It's probably ten in Dakota County. It's probably fifteen here is more realistic.
Right. Especially now with all the building units that are going up. So that is going to change.
To work on that over the next couple of years.
And just the change in housing that you were talking earlier, the number of housing units that are being built right now is really an anomaly of what's been going on here for the last twenty years.
Right. That's a rapid change.
Those are your purpose. It's not because you're local zoning in the county and the township's not wanting to have a lot of building out there. It's gonna happen. And that's why you see most of those things going up.
Right.
Right. Are there even enough consultants for everybody to hire, if everybody's needing them? And are they doing highway robbery because they're in such demand?
Well, I can't answer the second question, but as far as I know, there are enough consultants out there. A lot of these consultants are getting to be big firms that are, that aren't just local anymore, but they have branch offices in other parts of the country too, where they can bring people in if they have to. They're, they're large enough that they can get people who are these experts in just one area too. But it could, it could have an influence too on what they're charging though.
And the big firms are coming in and hiring people's city and county engineers too.
Sure. Sure.
Yes, they are.
I don't think they're taking a pay cut to go there.
But all counties have that problem.
In cities, yes.
Yeah.
Concrete base.
Oh, I'm sorry, Todd?
No, we're good.
You're good? Sorry, Greg.
Okay. Another area we hired a specialty for was the concrete base stabilization we did on County Road Twenty-three. County Road Twenty-three was, it's always been a problem every spring, because you got, at the time, there was like five major agricultural, industrial, industrial sites out there. And these guys are bringing in feed for the turkeys and for their hogs whenever they have to. And that road was just a mess. So we, we put this concrete base stabilization underneath it, and so far, it's held up extremely well. And I know Brad, you, you mentioned before that we should have some kind of a program for upgrading our gravel roads. We really don't have a plan for that whole segment of our road system. There's quite a few, few miles out there. So this could be, we get around to it, we, we could try to develop a program where we go in and narrow up these roads, clean out the ditches, reestablish all of the drainage, and then put base stabilization onto the surface of that road. Clean out the ditches, reestablish all of the drainage and then put base stabilization onto the surface of that road and. You go through that and do that on these these gravel road systems. Over a ten year period of time, the gravel road system as a whole would be in much better shape and probably save us a lot of money on hauling aggregate too. How to take care of them.
And one other question, when we looked at that WSB, I see you use them a lot, are there other, do you go and get quotes on these or you're just happy to get a consultant to do it?
Yeah, that's that's.
Others that you're using?
Yeah, we we did, for County Road One, we went out and got a couple quotes and went with them, they had a good price and. And we know the people have worked with them, I know the people at at WSB, they've told me that they've done, I thought they've done a very good job for us. For for a good price, and now what you're going to do, if you're going to have one consultant firm that does the design. Just makes sense to have them do the right away too, because the folks in right away can talk to the people in design. And if they say, well, Mr. Smith really doesn't like the way his driveway is coming through here. The right away agent can talk directly to the designer and then and talk to him to find out is there some kind of a change that you could make.
And we don't have to go through the bid process for that to get.
Not for consultants, you know.
I think if you look at at consultants for maybe for like township bridges. They may use Erickson, they may use WSB, they may use, I mean, there are others out there and. That have different areas where they focus. And where their their price is better in those areas.
Yeah, the last time we did a, we did our transportation study, that was with SRF. And SRF is now working on. Doing the Pell study for Mendat on Highway fifty two, and I think part of the reason that they were selected for it is that they had done. They had done a transportation plan for Goodyear County, so they had a lot of the data and they knew this area. Problem intersections, this is an area where we we should be hiring some consultants to take a look at. We just picked four areas that we know there's been a lot of accidents recently, Ben Street and Pioneer Road in Goodyear. We need to do something, County Road One, County Road Six, even after we we changed the location of that intersection, County Road One and County Road Six, it should have been much safer. But we still have a lot of accidents out there, a lot of them seen from from cars who will come up that intersection and time even slow down. And when they don't even slow down, they run into somebody else, that's not a pretty situation. County Road eighteen and Sturgeon Lake Road, the tribe has been complaining for quite a while. It's it's in rough shape right now, we're we're working with the city to do a study to try to figure out what really is the right fix for that intersection. In the middle of the summer, when one of their concerts get let out. They have hundreds of cars all trying to leave at one time and it's an absolute mess for them, so. We should take a look at trying to find out, is there a design that's better than the one we have that would alleviate those problems? And we.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We also, there are a lot of accidents up there, I don't know how people just drive through stop signs without looking. Happens up there quite a bit.
Is there, is there any work on the a bridge over that railroad? Is that going anywhere?
Yeah, as far as I know, it was a funded federal project, I have no idea.
That's what I heard too, and it's been, it's been okay, so.
Yeah.
I believe they're in the process.
It would be really smart to figure out that at the same time, because they're going to be. If they're going to be doing that bridge, that you've got everything there to do whatever you need to do over there. And you got to get environmental permits for all of it. It would make sense to piggyback if we can.
Yeah, we should talk to Jay.
Those together.
So Greg, on the county road thing, so especially if we're talking about potential roundabouts. Like county roads, then does Mendat pay for that, do we pay for that, does it a fifty fifty, how do they get paid?
If it's if it's part, if it's an if it's intersecting with trunk highway, Mendat has a. Cost sharing agreement process that they use, and if it is that, in this case, if it's going to be between the county and the city. We would do the same type of.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Or would it be exactly two thirds county because we have two roads and they have one, but we'll work out something with. With the city before we get started on doing that, and that would go for the cost of doing the study and for the most part would. You're going to see the same kind of numbers and actual costs for construction.
Thank you.
The last one we've got here is in Pine Island, they've asked us to take a look at the intersection right by the Quick Trip. It's actually our County Road eleven and Main Street, which is our our fifty two, excuse me, sixty two. They have a lot of complaints about a lot of pedestrians after school, kids walking across, getting to the Quick Trip. And it's one of those intersections, it's a non-standard intersection and those always cause problems for people. This County Road eleven comes down and goes this way. Main comes up this way and then you got another city street that comes in from the west, so. We should look at doing something out there to improve that safety problem.
There's a big issue with the fire department too, because they say they've been at a busy time like that when they're trying to get back out to Highway fifty two. And they've sat there for like twelve, thirteen minutes just waiting for people to, you know, with lights and sirens, but there's just so many cars, you know.
Yep.
Couldn't get through.
And any other unusual circumstances will hire specialists when we need an answer to something that we. That we're not experts in to determine ourselves. Construction inspection, this is when we're going to talk about. County Road fifty seven bridge here, typically we do the construction inspection ourself. But we just, we had an engineering tech who resigned from the department. Literally weeks before that the project was going to start, and that was the person who was going to be out on the project and then all of a sudden he wasn't available. And everybody else was tied up with other projects, so. We asked our our neighbors if we could borrow somebody, but counties didn't have any. Anybody, backside of the county said, we're in the same boat you're in, we've got projects and we can't find inspectors for our project. So we talked to Mendat, and same thing, they're all their construction inspectors were busy still on current construction projects. We contacted Woodset, they're the firm that did the design, they didn't have anybody. So we contacted SRF and we had just worked with SRF on the Historic Third Avenue Bridge in Cannon Falls. So we knew who those people were and that they they did a very good job for us and they were available. So that's who we went with. Original cost was just about ninety thousand dollars. And one thing about SRF, the vast majority of the bridges these guys work with are the big bridges, you're talking, you know, the interstate bridges. Large projects, big, large projects, not County Road fifty seven type of a project, so. I think they assumed there was going to be a whole lot more time and effort put into it than what was required and. So far today, we've paid out thirty four thousand and that should be real close to what it's going to cost us for that, for the project to successful. Now let's take a look at the funding for that bridge here. Broke it down between design, the actual, the construction inspection and the construction itself under contract. You take a look under the design portion of it. We hired out the design for the bridge and our staff also go out to do surveying and we do some of the design for the grading that's coming to these bridges. So we pay the consultant fifty four thousand, we put twenty three thousand county dollars into the design. And the county dollars paid one hundred percent of that cost, the construction inspection, same thing, we had a consultant that forty three thousand. County staff. Running down samples and things like that was twelve thousand. And as I take a look at those those dollars for design and construction inspection, if we had used our own staff to do the all of the inspection. That forty three thousand, we may have been able to cut that in half, maybe down to twenty one thousand, somewhere in that general area. So by hiring consultant, that cost us in this case, probably an extra twenty thousand dollars or so. Take a look at the contractor, the entire cost to actually build the bridge was covered with federal money at five hundred and thirty eight thousand and state money at a hundred and thirty four thousand. No dollars from the county. Actually paid for the bridge itself. At the end of the day, the county ended up paying a hundred and thirty three thousand for a project that cost eight hundred and six thousand for a bridge that. Has a value of six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. We ended up paying seventeen percent of the project as a whole, so even though we did in this case have to hire a consultant to come up and do the construction inspection. Anytime I can get something and pay seventeen percent of it as a total, I'll take it.
Is that, is that a typical split? That that the county on, take this bridge, move it down the road, we're doing another one. That's got federal dollars, is that still going to be a normal split?
If if the state has the match money, if the if the state has the match money, they'll match it up. So that the actual cost of construction is nothing. But if they don't have that money, and there's nothing guaranteed that 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 state money is going to be there on a continual basis. And that's what that bonding issue, by not putting bonding into bridges could impact the availability of state match money for the actual cost of hiring the contractor.
Okay, so now take that, take the feds out of it and it's a state project. That the state bridge bonding money covers, like I talked about with township where the township's outside costs roughly is twenty thousand dollars. How does that look on the county level?
It's, we don't have that same sweetheart deal. If anything, if I remember correctly, and I may be wrong here, that the state would, under that situation, if they got state dollars, we're going to be matching up for the contractor. Or but I think it's a twenty eighty split, they they cover up eighty percent of it and then we'd have to pay the twenty percent for the construction.
That's still really, that that, that's eighty percent that we don't have to levy for.
Correct.
Exactly. Okay. That's what I.
So whenever.
I knew it wasn't the same as the township, but I really didn't know that it was that that we're only responsible for around twenty percent.
Plus, plus the designing and.
Right. That, yeah.
It's still, yeah, those state programs for bridge bonding are very important to counties. Good safety inspections and evaluations, we somewhat talked about this earlier that we. We hired Mendat, but but twenty one thousand dollars a year to take a look at our our bridges for this year and next year. To, so, and again, that's what I really liked about it. Now there's some of the other county engineers do the same thing, it's a different set of eyes, taking a look at a bridge that we've been looking at for a long time. But and we talked about this before, their staff, they're full-time inspectors, they're fine-tuned to their expertise and they have the equipment that we don't have.
Commission. One question on that, where was our LPI compared to their LPI?
It's, it it all goes in the same program.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they they actually go in.
They had that other, they had that other tool that they could do a different, an additional measurement that we didn't have.
Okay, exactly, which determined that that bridge was, that those pilings had really had nothing left to them, we had no way of knowing. Exactly what they did have left to them as far as good solid.
I think you're saying the county doesn't determine the LPI, they put the data in and then the LPI comes back to them.
The state has a program called SIMS.
Yep.
And all of the counties and the state, we all use the exact same program, it's approved by a federal highway. And that LPI, LPI is determined by SNES or it's based off of.
The the state was able to provide more detailed data.
Yeah, and so for all the bridges that they inspected for us, they went into SIMS for us and they put their information in. And one thing I really like about it is they, these guys spend a lot of time on their inspections and they'll go through. Each one of the beams on a beam bridge and tell you exactly how many square footage are in conditional state one, two, three and four.
And did the LPIs drop more than they normally would because the state has that higher level of inspection?
No, the 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 LPI should, you know, based on the information that it has, it should come up with the same LPI.
Right.
If we did it or if they did it.
But they have better, more information, more detailed, which could change the LPI.
Which could, yeah.
You have to, you have to remember that they were doing an inspection at a different. Different time than we were doing it, we weren't, we didn't do the inspection and then they do the inspection at the same time and come up with two different numbers.
But I would guess that if they can look at things in a more detailed way, that maybe the quality of that number changes a little bit.
Yeah, it'll get, it'll get, like on on beams, for instance, you'll have a certain portion of them that are condition state one, conditional state two, conditional state three and then four is. Very bad condition, it's where the piles were, and they go through it and like say they detail everything up. And at the end of the day, they'll change the percentages accordingly.
Right.
Right, so it does, it gives us. The reports take a long time to read because they put in a lot of data, but now that you have a lot of data, ten years from now, you can say, yeah, okay, beam number one had. X number of square feet, that was a conditional state three, well, it doesn't anymore, and it's easier to find those changes.
Yep, that's what I would think.
Greg, well, I mean, I can certainly see how a bridge inspector needs to be quite a specialty area. But it seems like twenty one thousand dollars a year to have Mendat inspector comes in is quite an inexpensive amount of money for a bridge inspector. So. Well, it seems like that one really makes sense for a relatively small amount of money for a very high X level of expertise.
Yeah, yeah. Then on the other side of the coin is we do like to have our staff continue to do it because if we, if, well, if we had Mendat come in to do it all the time. Then our staff won't have to do it, we would get data from them on an annual basis that we could use to determine, it's like, okay, hey, this one's got to get moved up in the program. But if we're not going to hire to do it every year, then it's good that our staff is out there so that we have a, we have a better idea. Of when these bridges are starting to change in their condition too.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I can understand part of that, but if we're looking for hiring and we're short-staffed already, that might be a way to, you know, to let them focus on others.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'd have to talk to them to see if they could take us on and do it on a full-time basis, they they could do it for a two-year period of time here. At some point, they're going to run out of inspectors, but we could, we could. We could branch them on the subject.
Everybody else, yeah. Okay.
We, and then we hired in this case, in twenty five five oh one, when Mendat's inspectors found that there was a critical finding, then we hired. Ron Benson of Stone Brook, who was a well-known bridge designer in the state of Minnesota for years. He came down and then he's the one that gave us the evaluation report on, could the bridge be opened and if so, what was loading beyond it or should it just be closed in general? So again, in those situations, we hire the experts to do that stuff. Consulting services, this is the list of consulting services that we've got. So it it shows the the project. The amount of the contract, we broke it down into basically pre-two thousand twenty three, so contracts that were started last year, someone could even been started a year before that. Well, we got in twenty three, twenty twenty three and what we're projecting, we're going to need them beyond twenty twenty three. So that explains why this is where, this is where the money's in the budget, we're anticipating to spend on that. So other options besides hiring consultants, our other option that we've got, I've talked about it before. Contact the Mendat or the other counties, see if they can borrow staff to us, but a lot of them are having the same problems we do. And for all these areas, highway design, right away, bridge inspection, construction inspection, we could try to find other counties or Mendat to help us do that. We weren't very successful with bridge for County Road fifty seven, they just weren't available. The other option is we can hire more staff. First thing we need to do is get that existing engineering technician position filled. So we've been looking for two and a half years, we did talk to a gentleman here last last week, two weeks. We may actually get this position filled here. Soon, hopefully. So we need an engineering technician with some highway design experience, if this person comes in that that we're talking to, he doesn't have this kind of experience, so we're going to have to teach him. How to do it, right away is another area, we really need to fill somebody with some ex, some experience. We have nobody in the department anymore that has gone through that process of the schooling for it. Specialists, as far as bridge design, transportation studies, cement stabilization, I would not recommend hiring people, staff into those positions. When those specialties come up, we just stick with the specialist to do that work instead of hiring staff to do it. Just wouldn't, wouldn't make sense because you don't, you don't need a bridge and a bridge designer that's working on a full-time basis and you probably couldn't afford one anyway. So that was my best attempt trying to answer the question of why are we using consultants as much as we are using. as much as we are using consultants?
So just a question, kind of piggyback on when Steve was up here earlier, O'Keefe, and, and talking about internal attorney work, if we had the right person in the attorney's office to do right-of-way acquisition, does that even make sense?
Um, that's a good question. I think a lot of the people that do acquisition aren't, aren't specifically attorneys. It would be nice if his staff had, had the background that if we have to go to condemnation, that they could do that work, but the rest of it, as far as negotiating with the folks and trying to actually get it acquired, I don't know if that would be an attorney-type of work.
Well, and I, and I, I look at it from the standpoint that, you know, for a hundredth or for County Road two, I mean, two hundred and sixty-five thousand will hire you an attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
Who, when they're not doing right-of-way, can be doing something else in the attorney's office that is internal to Goodyear County. I just, I just question whether there's a piece of that.
For two hundred and some thousand, you could easily hire another engineering technician or two.
Right.
That could do that same kind of work in-house as it was when I came here.
If you could find them.
Right.
If you could find them. But we don't, we, we're not even looking for them at this point.
And, you know, the past ones we've had have been really, really.
Yes.
The right kind of people to work with the public on right-of-way acts. It's not, anybody can't do that, it takes the right personality.
Yeah.
And the right demeanor to be able to make those things happen.
Yeah, yeah, you've got a, the, when I was down in Faribault County, my assistant was this perfect guy to, to hire, to buy right-of-way, he could sit down with a farmer and talk with him all day long till he finally agreed to what he wanted to do, and sit there and drink coffee and talk about farming. Those are the people that can acquire right-of-way, and it takes a special person to do it. And we did have, when I first came here, John was.
John?
Sure.
Well, I believe it.
Absolutely excellent, unfortunately had to retire.
Did you have something on to say, Brian?
No, I was just thinking in the bigger picture too, of what we're talking about, Brad, somebody that can help all the real estate property tax items in general, I know we've had a few, you know, that we've had to work with the attorney's office, and I know somebody that's, you know, semi-retired, semi-retirement, that helped us, and just recently retired, but, you know, so, I think in bigger picture, I want to work with that.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I think that, yeah, for me, the, the good takeaway is, yes, we approved eighty-nine thousand for bridge inspection, it came in at forty-three, less than half. That's a, that's a real positive, yes, yes, it looked humongous at the beginning, in the end, it really wasn't that ominous a thing, it wasn't, you know, that truly is how you hope the private sector will work with us, rather than say, no, we said it was gonna be eighty-nine thousand, it's eighty-nine thousand, sorry.
Exactly. They gotta give us the worst-case scenario, though, when they're giving us.
Yeah, when you're, when you're approving something that could be this much, and I understand that.
Because if they'd said forty and came back at eighty, we'd have blown a gasket, so.
I have one more question, that is, when looking at consultants and where we need them and when we need them, does it get any less expensive if we plan like a year ahead of time than if we're, like when this young man or person, sorry, left just weeks before our project was gonna start, and then all of a sudden, oh my God, now we're in a crisis, so now we have to have somebody at the last minute, and usually in the private sector that, then increase costs. If we plan more ahead, is it any less expensive than?
Well, we can plan ahead when staff is gonna leave.
No, 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 I realize that, but I mean, with some of these specialty areas, you know, upfront, we're going to hire consultants. So I guess my question is still, if we know we need consultants on this project that's going in two thousand twenty-five, then if we look for one to schedule when we're in two thousand twenty-four, is it any less expensive than if we wait till six months before and now we're looking for one?
Well, I would think from the consultant's side is if, if they're negotiating in, in two thousand twenty-four for what they're gonna do in two thousand twenty-five, they don't know what their costs are gonna be in two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I get it.
So they're gonna.
But on the aspect of do we plan, I mean, that was that, like three slides ago, that showed you what we, we already know what's coming up in twenty-four.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I get that one's.
Does make some sense, it's cheaper to go into the clinic than to go to the emergency room, and it makes some sense that planning ahead.
That's much more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.